My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma. And just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
I've got 6:30. We'll go ahead and get our meeting started. Can we do the claims first?
That's all you got? It's just bad. I didn't have time to get all my deposits done, updated and bank reconciliation done. It was probably about the end of the bank. I guess we've been in a little 14. You do get wet.
I had water on my hands. I'm just going to shower.
Man, I'm armed on 41.
On the internet, it was off path. Everybody was there too.
Kathy, your pictures were gorgeous. You posted. Looked like beautiful.
It was. It was really, totally good. When Todd's bragging about it, I did a good job. When I hear him say, "Pictures don't do it justice," I understand what they mean.
Make sure it's in the minutes.
I think I've asked you this before. We down about the last payment on this road with the bank number?
Yes, September is the last one. August, August 1st.
Next month then?
End of this month.
That's the last one.
Are we done?
This road? What? That one's big.
Yeah. That'll free our extra money. I mean, you know, it's a good type, that one.
That's good.
That's good. And did we need to put a ring on that meter?
Well, he told Jason I'm on the race, having to get the chance.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a note to make sure.
He's not, the drive is not going to go across it. Matter of fact, he's going to put rocks around the meter so nobody drives.
To protect it, okay.
I gotta leave a little after 7:00. I gotta pick my balder up from volleyball.
Means no questions.
It never ends.
No, it won't. It will one day.
Yeah.
Then I'll be bored.
Yeah, you will. You wonder what happens.
She is a sixth grader. And it's been quick already, so.
Is she, is that middle school sixth grader?
First year of it.
I couldn't remember where that started.
Yep.
We had gotten away from her, but then I told Todd just a while ago, I said, "You realize we are starting in it again because Everett starts kindergarten tomorrow."
Well, she's the kid that signs up for everything, Alan, yes. So like, if there's anything going on, it's...
Her hand's going up.
Yeah. I mean, she's even the one that when they have to do like stuff at practice, she's the one that's like, I'm like, she gets it from her mom, I think.
The claims were on the town, $2,102.21. And the water department was $11,676.62. Under Old Business, I've got a few things here. I did receive a quote from ByState Asphalt. I asked for really three different areas to be addressed. The one in the middle, which is the area at the arch, is actually on the west side of the sidewalk, so it's not really on the town. Wanted to see what that would take to patch that area, but I think, for me, it's too much for us to...
North Rooker?
Yes. The second, the second drive, the north drive that goes back.
Oh.
So that's still on the bank property. And...
I don't think the bank owns that property.
Yeah.
They don't, they only own it so far over.
Yeah. According to what I see, they still show it at the lab, except they do. I know the ladies over here own, from the highway going towards the railroad tracks, a piece of it. But if you look at the mapping, it shows that the bank owns that. And whether it didn't get recorded right or something like that.
Well, the reason why I say it was, they should have put an ATM machine out there. They couldn't do it because they didn't own that property.
Okay.
They could pass something to the future ex on that property.
Or the railroad. The railroad owns some property through there.
That was a mess when we looked at it a few years ago.
Yeah.
You're still saying some company that the railroad says, "I wonder why they didn't deed that back?" Like, a paper you would have gotten for it to deed back like the other people did when they shut that down.
Now, Sam said you had to go do that.
There was a paper that we got sent, because that was right after when Mom and Dad had passed. We got that, we still owned it. Debbie filed it, so that way the property there, they were able to get it all back.
But seeing you guys filed it, seeing that's what Sam said, she filed it, they may not have filed it.
Because we got the paper to know what to do, so.
So it's a patch on 236, that's one over here in front of the old station?
Yes. Either way, we're going to pay for it. We can get Ronnie, UMAC, to get somebody in to pave it, or use ByState. ByState, when I talked to him, he said, "Since it's going on state highway, it takes a much higher grade asphalt."
It does.
And so he said, "You'll see that in the price, reflect that."
A patch at the arch, I think you're right, that's too much. So just put a stone in there?
There's that little triangle's the bank, and then on the other side, it's CSS.
Okay.
So I think you're talking about the triangle area, right?
Yes, yes.
So that's the bank, still that little triangle, and on the other side of it, the railroad still owns. At least according to the county's stuff. But I think you're talking about the little triangle area.
So, I don't know what we're talking about right there.
Oh, I can scroll over then and see that, but...
It's just right at the other side of the leg of the arch, going in what used to be an alley, I always thought.
That might be in the right of way, then.
Anyway, I thought it was, it was $3,600 for that patch. And I don't think that, right now, we want to spend another $3,600. The 236 patch was $2,970. And the other patch was the holes in town plus the repair that they cut over on Elm Street for that water leak was another $2,750. So their total was $9,320. What I'm asking for is your approval minus $3,600 of that 9,320 for the patching for this year.
I don't have a problem taking $3,600, waiting that down, but can't put a stone in that hole or something?
We have. We have, we've done that. It just...
I know we've done it.
They just keep ending up and they keep driving, the semis keep, or whatever, driving.
Future ex-semis come through and they...
Start going right.
They hold there until they can get next in line to get over there. Yeah, we can, of course we can. Put a stone in there, it just will not hold.
Well, eventually it'll work its way up, all the way up to the sidewalk, and we'll deteriorate that.
Yep.
Almost like those semis, because they'll end up and they kind of, you see, once in a while, they'll cut it short and go right over the handicap part of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's because people don't get on the right of way either. They try to take the corner and everything, too. It's just not an easy corner to get around through.
So I'm asking for your permission to go ahead and do the paving, an amount of $2,970 for 236 and $2,750 for the holes and the patching on Elm Street.
So that's just... 2970, actually, I've got it down, like, down there.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, he and I drove the town and looked several places.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem. I'll make a motion that we move forward.
Okay. You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, then, those who've ever say aye?
Aye.
Aike, opposed? Okay.
So if you want to keep that?
Remove that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, scarred, good.
I've worked a little bit with UMAC on flushing hydrants and exercising valves, and I think I brought this up one other time, and I've talked to Troy. He's going to give me a price on what that's going to cost for labor, and then I'll bring it to you, hopefully, next meeting. They usually don't do that until fall.
Okay. Is he going to present it as a service contract that's continuing?
We can, yes. It can go on as an annual service contract, yeah. That's what he does to some of the, with some of the other communities.
Well, the reason I was saying that was, sometimes you get a bit better deal to do with a continued service contract rather than just having to deal with one, so believe me, you know?
Yeah.
That's why I was asking that.
Forever, it's been the fire department that has done it.
Right.
And I think it needs to be done regularly. We've got new valves in, we've got new hydrants. I just think we need to continue that process. So when he, when he brings that, I'll bring it to you.
Okay.
When we look at it.
I agree, if we don't maintain our equipment, it's not going to last.
Yeah. Soldiers on the arch, that's been a big question mark for...
We're ready for Christmas.
Well, I told Kenny the other day, I said, "Leave them." I said, "We're not going to take them down in August to put them back up in November." I said, "People are going to think we're nuts, but when we take them down after Christmas this year, they may or may not go back up, depending on..."
That's what I'm wondering.
"...whether we have the help." So that's, that's why they're still there, and they will be there until after Christmas. I talked to Brady this evening. He's working tonight. We talked about several ordinance violations that he has followed through with, so I think it's a court thing, I don't know how far we are in the court on it, and how soon the judge gets to things like that, an ordinance violation, but I, I know it takes a while.
So he has a feeling he's got to get to me, I know, but I certainly have any currently pending, though. Let me look.
What become of the one over on Center Street with the Kings?
He said that that has been turned in.
Turned in as far as what?
To go before the judge.
To go before the judge, okay.
So we had court in February. I'll have to look at the King one. The one I show pending is the Lawhorn one, and it's set September 17th. And then we have a small claims one that's set that day also. He talked to me about one on Main Street, but I haven't received the write-up on it yet.
Yeah, I talked to him specifically about it. It's clearly a multiple ordinance violation one. He's, has talked, I think, to the prosecutor, or you, or both, and they will need a judge's order.
He talked to me. I don't know if he talked to the prosecutor. I told him I'd feel more comfortable if we had it ordered from the judge to protect ourselves on that. And he seemed to think that was the right process, too. So I just need the write-up then at that point, and I can have the judge order the removal.
Okay, that's good.
And he knows that. So he said he'd stop then next time he's in town and drop off some write-ups to him, so.
He said he stopped there four or five times to hand them a...
Here?
Yeah, down here. And he said, "I can't get anybody to come." He said, "They got that big dog." And he said, you know, that the only way to do is to put the dog down, or put it to sleep, or whatever. And he said, "I'm not going to do that. I'm wait, wait." And he said, "I can't get face contact with the person that's living there."
If we could figure out if he's employed, or somebody that lives there is employed, I could, we could have him served at work, if we need to consider that. Last time we talked with them is through their, his parents.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that might be a source of service also. If he gives me the write-up, I can send certified mail to the parents.
Okay.
Because the parent called me and talked to me about it before. And he just kind of went right back to doing what he'd been doing.
Yeah, he hadn't changed any.
Yeah.
No, he hasn't.
Well, he's flunking it because he knows you can get by with it.
Oh, yeah, he's doing all kinds of things.
The last I knew, that property was in the parents' name. I don't know if that's transferred or not.
It's in the parents', and it shows it's also in his...
Brother-in-law's.
Brother-in-law, I think it was, yes.
So if Brady writes up the parents', I can serve the parents'.
Okay.
But at some point, we had their address and contact info, so I'll have to...
I had the phone number. At one time, I had the phone number of the mom when they had the water down there.
Yeah.
What's your small claims quarter?
Husband.
Husband. Oh, okay.
And he knows about it because I saw him at a football practice for my son one day, so.
Well, I think he was told he couldn't have those two trailers on there, so he put another fence up and put a third trailer on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then he was told he had to remove it, so he moved it inside the sidewalk, but he parked his black trailer across the sidewalk. It's just a, an ongoing...
I just told him to write them all up and give them to me.
Okay.
And then we'll get him in front of the judge. They really be his parents to be in front of the judge. They own the property, so.
Yeah.
Which is unfortunate for them, but...
And aren't they in Kingland?
I don't know.
I thought someone said they were back.
At one time, they lived up around Kingland, but they've also lived at Tennessee or...
I thought someone said they were back.
All right, I will talk to Brady.
I've talked to the mother at some point, I remember that.
And then I talked to Brady, besides the other concerns we have and have voiced, as the one on South Center Street, all the way down on the very end of there. That has gone on quite a while. It just needs to be addressed and cleaned up, so.
I'm not certain I know about it.
I don't think you do.
Okay. So I feel like something's wrong.
We've never, I don't think we've ever pursued it. We've kind of waited on it. And then the next thing I have on Old Business is the right-of-way at the park easement, whatever you want to call that.
It really needs to be easement, but they were wanting to have it as a license. But a license means that they can take away your permission to drive on it anytime they want to, for any reason they want to. And so if you guys invest a bunch of money putting rock down in there, and then they take their license away...
Then that, yeah.
Right. I mean, you and I kind of talked about that a little bit. It really needs to be an easement if we're going to invest that kind of money into it.
Personally, I wouldn't, I would be in favor of us buying that piece of property, and we give him the easement or the right-of-way to get through to his property. And that, I don't care if it's a perpetual easement to the next owner, that's okay, but I...
They didn't seem to like the idea of it being a perpetual easement for us, but if they'd sell the property, then that'd be fine, yeah. But we can't, we can't do what they want to do, because what they want to do is have control, and if you guys invest money in it, you're not going to, I mean, even while, even if you believe what they said, which I don't have reason not to, the next owner may not feel that way.
And that's the same way with an easement. Even an easement would should be contingent with the current owners if it sells?
No, it, we, the way I had it drafted, I sent them the easement draft, and I had it running with the land.
With the land, okay.
Which means it's perpetual, it's there no matter who owns the land.
Okay.
It would be an easement. And it was on the far side, 10 feet wide. And it ran from the front to the back to allow you guys access for the purpose of a parking lot, is what I had drafted. But they didn't, I guess they had talked to attorney, and the attorney was telling them to use a license, which was great for them, but that's terrible for you guys.
Yeah.
So, because then it wouldn't run with the land, and it'd be contingent on them being okay with you driving on it.
They told me they never hired the attorney, they just went in and got some advice.
Yeah.
So anyway, I know that puts you in a bad situation trying to talk to them.
Well, when they called in, they said that they, their attorney had said this, and my staff's marching orders are, if they're represented by council, I can't talk to them. And so that's how that was framed, is that their attorney said this, and they wanted to talk to me. And I said to tell them that their attorney can call me, or they can talk to the town, but I can't talk to them.
So, do you have an objection to asking if we can purchase that and give them the right-of-way or the easement, whichever, whatever you want to call it?
I don't have a total objection. I guess the question is, the response, once you end up and they agree to what the cost's going to be, we got to get it surveyed?
I, I, no...
Or can you write something out?
I can draft it the same way.
Same way, okay.
I'd probably flip the easement to the other side of the property for them, so it's away from the park, would be my suggestion.
Right.
And have it 10 feet wide and run on it. I guess, what would that be, southern property line of it, instead of the northern line? But, and, I mean, for your purposes, letting them have it run with the land's not a big deal, because it doesn't interfere with your intended use.
Okay.
To buy it, we'd have, we can't pay more than the average of two appraisals to buy it, though.
Okay.
So whatever their price is, I mean, it's not a real big strip of land, though.
It's not, it's not.
So, I mean, if it's cheap enough, it's possible we don't have to do appraisals, but I'm not certain what it'd be worth, so.
They've been good to talk to.
Right. I have a problem with, just to, just to check to see what...
They, they do not want to say that, sell that piece of property. They own to the east of the park. And even though it's not very large, they still don't want to sell that. That's, that's fine.
But they own quite a bit on the back of it, though, that runs behind berries and stuff, the way it looks. I think it L-shaped around.
Yeah, but it's not very many acres, really. Marvin Rodeo owns the bulk of all that back in there, even behind the park. So I don't know whether it's 20 acres or something like that, maybe.
I mean, now knowing that they don't have an attorney, I, I can talk to them now if they'd be willing to talk to me.
I think they would, yeah, they would want me.
Just when they call and say something like that, it makes it so, the rules are very clear on that, that I can't talk to them.
Is that a legal?
It's a, yeah. You can't talk to somebody that's represented by council as an attorney. You have to talk to their attorney, to keep attorneys from taking advantage of people.
The moment you find out.
Yeah. The moment they say that, I'm no longer allowed to talk to them.
Well, I would be happy to have you do that.
And yeah, so this is .11 acres is what that little strip shows up as. So I can't imagine, it's super expensive.
It's just a straight, straight strip?
Yeah, it runs straight. I mean, there's a little angle to it, but there's no deviation to it.
It's a tenth of an acre, then.
And yeah, they, they do own, like, an L-shaped strip behind it, it looks like.
They should, on the south side.
Yeah. But yeah, so then, I mean, this is like a tenth of an acre, and I can see what the assessed value is on it. I mean, it's...
Lockburn thinks he owns that, but he doesn't own that back there.
No, he owns right...
I've told him twice, he's called me a lot, but you don't know what I'm telling you.
He owns right next to it, in a little Nevada-shaped thing, yeah. But, but yeah, this is just a straight strip all the way back on that particular parcel.
Well, it looks like, I feel there is eight acres. That's what Brown's on.
Eight acres, you're saying?
Yeah.
So I mean, the assessed value of that...
Unless it goes on back. No, Marvin heard this.
Marvin owns the other, because that's just a wedge piece we're talking about, that eight acres is, because the track runs at a slight angle.
It's actually, part of it's in town and part of it's out. But it's, if I can get it to show up for you. It's that area right there. So it's, the trap is all, yeah, it's a wedge piece, yeah. So eight acres of ground, and they want to hang on to that.
But yeah, we could easily give them access, too. I mean, if they deeded it to us and we just gave them a perpetual easement, that'd give them what they needed, and they'd have a road they could drive on, too.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's assessed value's $600, so, I mean, the appraised value's probably going to be like $2,000 bucks, or $1,500 bucks, or something like that.
Okay.
I mean, that's usually happened.
I'll ask you then to touch base, probably with her. She's the one that, that I've talked to.
And I believe I still have her number in the file, so if I don't, I'll reach back out, but...
Okay.
But yeah, now that I know she doesn't have an attorney, that's different.
Well, now that we've got some of the poles in up there, we can now start looking at, you know, costs of putting in a parking lot on that area.
They're setting the last two poles tomorrow morning at 8:30.
Yeah, Jason texted me.
Oh, okay. Well, he's all over that. I was asking about the bill from RMC. He's like, "All right, you give that to Kevin." I was like, "Oh, okay."
Yeah. I thought for sure he would get something on that pole that's the most south pole on the outfield, by the, yeah. Right on down, down there six or seven feet, wherever they're putting them in.
We're not out of the wood yet. We've still got a chance to run the conduit and the electrical and all of that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, I'll reach out to the Browns then on that, and see if maybe they'll agree to that, or maybe I can explain to them why our way's a better way.
The bill, I was going to give this to Kathy, and that is out of that grant that we've received. What we have is a bill for four poles that went on the lower diamond, and four poles that went on the upper diamond. Now, they weren't all new poles on that upper diamond, maybe none of them.
There shouldn't be a pole, there should only be one bill for four poles.
For the four new poles.
Because Rockville donated, the Elko donated, used for the jumper.
Okay. I don't know if they're duplicates, I didn't even look at that. He just handed me an envelope, but that...
Yeah, it's a duplicate, so you, yeah, you only have the one.
Okay, the 46.
Yeah. So you, just one check to them. And we had a grant for $5,000 that should, that came in, that should cover that. That was the last grant that came in.
I don't remember being that much money, but I don't have papers, so. But he had a grant for...
So we should be good.
There was a grant that came in from the RMC foundation.
Yeah, I knew there was, but it wasn't good that much.
Talking to Jason, they are trying, I guess you're trying to figure out the cost of your lighting exactly and how that's going to go, but he sounded pretty confident that you guys were on top of it.
So we, we're going to have a meeting in the next couple of weeks. They gave us sample lights that we can look at, and RMC said if we give them the specifics on the lights, they can give us a quote on cost on usage, which would be tremendously helpful.
Yes.
But that's kind of where that's at. I mean, the usage would only be during ball season, it'd probably be fairly limited. It'd just be early in ball season, or if we have tournaments or things like that. So I don't think it'd be a lot of usage, but obviously, that's available to you guys, too, since it's the town's park, you know, as far as usage and things like that.
How are those lights come on? How are those lights come on? Will it be a switch in the concession stand or each individual pole?
It's going to be a switch in the concession stand.
That's why it's hard to be messing with them.
Yeah.
What's the distance to center field, you know, off your head?
Oh, man, I, I did know that.
It's one field, right?
There's two fields there. Um, I did know that, I, I don't, I, when we first started looking at it, I knew the answer to that. Two-hundred-and-fifty, maybe? Something like that, two-twenty?
Good enough.
I think Bloomingdale's is a little bigger. I think it's two-fifty. I think we may be two-twenty, two-thirty here in Marshall. On the bigger field. The smaller field's less than that. Because we had twelve-year-olds hitting it out on the smaller field during tournament.
Really?
Yeah.
Big enough to have a game with adults that aren't good at baseball?
Yes, yes.
That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, no, you could, we, we actually have had that in Bloomingdale when we did that some with the youth league, so. Brady actually played in it and hit, hit the ball pretty far.
Got a nice stuff by sleep.
He, he, uh, can hit pretty hard.
Uh, they are going to take the old scoreboard down.
Okay.
It doesn't work. I don't think we have any controls on it, so they're going to pull all those out and.
We were looking at trying to find a way to get something new for scoreboard.
Yeah.
It kind of depends on how much we have left after the lighting project's all done, so.
Right. During one of the mowings at the park, the mowers hit one of the poles that holds up the big swing set.
Holding up the what?
The big swing set, a big long one. The poles here, this is all stone and the grass is over here, but somehow they got into it, took two big chunks out of the pole that big. So I went to look at it and I decided we're not going to take the risk of putting kids on that swing set without getting it changed. So I've got a quote here from the Amish and they'll, uh, they'll take that old one out, put a new one in, concrete it in the ground with all the labor for two-hundred-and-forty dollars. And that's, that's heavy walled, galvanized pipe at twelve feet, I think, as well.
Which Steve offered to pay that when they did that.
Yes, and I.
Enough of that.
That's what I think we do, is then just send them the, the bill.
So, and he said, whatever, he said, I know you have guidelines that you have to obey and need to follow, so he said, you tell me what you need me to do.
There you go.
So, and I said, yeah.
If you're okay with that, I think that's the best way to go about it.
That's the best way to go, and it doesn't sound like a bad price when you're considering material and the labor.
Yeah, they called as soon as they did it and it was very upset and, except I don't know how she did it, but accidents happen. So she.
I bet it did more damage to the mower than.
That's what I was wondering about the mower.
I bet it did.
So.
Uh, so anyway, the Amish, I'll let you have that for now. The Amish will put that in. He said, he put a date of the twentieth that they had have it.
So you've already told him to get it done, then, okay.
Yes.
All right, so I will submit this to, to Steve.
Okay. That's all I have for tonight. Do you have anything, Lord?
I was curious what Brady's doing, um, kind of ordinance and stuff. Is he going around and looking, like expired plates and stuff? Like I've seen somebody's got like a trailer parked right next to the sidewalk and the plates are like way expired.
I can't answer that. He should be, especially these places that have a, a junk car without a plate on it.
Yes, because I was like kind of noticing that and I'm like, it's right out here out front where it's obvious and it's just sitting here, right along the sidewalk. It's like, why? Perfect picketing.
Sure, yeah. You think, Dale?
I'm good.
Good. Nick, is there anything we didn't cover? We just had no three, so.
No, actually stole everything. I was going to say.
Sorry.
That's all right. Um, yeah, that's all I had, really. I had update on the ballpark and then, um, Brady stuff we talked about, one or two things I really had. I'll take care of getting back with the Browns on that and maybe we'll work something out.
I'll give Brady a call, maybe right after the meeting on this.
Yeah.
Have you heard anything on the court that we had to submit all that paperwork on?
Oh, no, I'm glad you asked that. Um, they, so he's fighting it and he filed a motion to suppress all of the evidence in the case and is going to argue that himself against the prosecutor in court in August. So they have like August seventh or eighth or ninth or somewhere thereabouts court date, and then they have a September date where they're going to argue about the suppression motion.
So I submitted all those papers where I had all that data log.
Yeah, and you, I emailed you and you responded to me and I forwarded that back to the prosecutor.
That's why I wanted all that.
Yeah. No, that was good. Um, he asked me about, I told him I didn't have any idea what damage was done there. I just knew he got in there, so I told him I'd ask and.
That's Brady's supposed to have pictures, I thought.
Yeah, he's got all the evidence, prosecutor does. Um, it's, I mean, you guys have talked to that guy, so.
Shame we can't, you guys in the courtroom, a little bit.
I mean, it's just, I'm probably going to go over there and watch it just to, that way I can report back what went on.
Unless this weekend?
It's a, it's a, they're going to be, I think Thursday they'll be in front of the judge and I'll be over there that day, but the actual argument's going to be in September. So, nothing big will happen unless he wants to plead guilty, so. But he wants to suppress everything, the state name made to Brady, any evidence, and largely what he files, just kind of, I want all the evidence thrown out, basically what he said.
He's representing himself?
Yeah.
Swirly, interesting.
There's a saying for that, but I won't say it since we're going to record it.
Kathy?
Here is the board minutes from.
How long's it take?
July, oh, gee, yeah.
Six minutes? You take the back row?
Yeah, I always get mine.
I have never gotten anything back confirming. They got our letter for the explanation for idam on the violation. They've never said thank you or we need more information or we didn't get it or, nothing.
You'll hear from them in three or four years.
No, they use this name, I guess.
Yeah, or you'll never hear from them again and that's just state agencies and government, you know, big government. You'll get something randomly in the mail.
Oh, that's, oh, that's just everything that I was, the copies of that stuff. Because like one of these goes in the book, but they always keep it with the minutes, too.
You filed the plate?
That way it all stays together.
Okay.
Wouldn't you say when I was bored, I'd end up being in that courtroom watching him argue that while the order thrown out, you know?
Oh, it's open.
I know, it's open, but I don't want to go up there.
Be obvious?
Be obvious.
Oh, I'm.
I've never been before, it's open, yes, I understand that, but.
He's, he's.
Can you record it?
No, you can't, cameras in the courtroom.
Yeah. He's, he's something else, I don't. Still maintains he owns the park.
Yeah, you got to.
Thinks he does, told the prosecutor he owns that park. Said, all right, here's the deed.
Did I need to sign that one?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I was going to say, because I wasn't here.
No, you weren't here, no, 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 that just stays with paperwork.
That was last month. If he has ownership of it, we've got about fifty years worth of back mowing costs and maintenance.
Why is he going to tell me Matt personally possessed it at this point? I, there's, there's just no talking to him. I, I, I don't envy the prosecutor and happen to argue with him in all honesty. It's one of those things where it's like arguing against yourself.
Okay.
Um, you, Matt, did they tell me why I was gone and find out?
Yes.
I meant to look and see and I kept.
I'm getting my.
Thank you.
Bye.
They did dig that. I haven't talked to him since that.
Okay, so they did find something, then?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Why reports? I mean, they're not bad and it's a fire, they have that little leak down there, so.
So the, the use, the water usage for the fire was lower than what I thought.
Yeah, that's, well, that's all they gave me.
Yeah, I talked to Kenny and he went through.
And then they added another five hundred gallons on, if I remember right, because they come back, what, it sparked later in the day or something?
Right, it did, it was in the night.
Okay, I don't remember if it's add, I had it on.
They used twenty thousand five hundred of ours for the fire, the judgment.
So, but, and then that was never really shown back. But considering, you know, the weather, the kids playing in the water and watering flowers and stuff, it's not bad. And I just, this is my water adjustments I've done over the last few months I had to, I'd submitted. So.
So that curtain went off?
Yes, it is off, that's why. I keep it open, so I'll remember that it's there and that's why, anybody like that, I do that. I had one account that I was getting paid on it and I kept it open and he paid me off.
And then the Aubrey house, is it off now?
It's back on and they're good to go. They fixed their leak and. And I never heard any more about those people selling that house either, don't they? Abuse.
Oh, yeah.
So I've just left it alone, because that's not my place to go by her word. I have to go by the owners whenever they contact. And, oh, I had my meeting with the budget before I left, budget lady and everything looked good, so I'll have to get that all submitted so we can put that through for.
Oh, that'd be August?
September, because it's August. I wasn't going to have time to get it done before I left, because I had my meeting on Monday before I left on Wednesday. And, uh, so we'll submit it on Sep- September to present it and then approve it in October. But pretty much stay the same as what we've been doing.
So we could make changes?
Yeah, we can. Within, yeah, we need to move some stuff around, but.
Right.
We'd have to make sure that we, the money would be there, too.
Yeah.
But.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You got anything for us to see?
No, not really. I mean, I've, I've heard what he was talking about with the trailers down the street. Because I live in the little yellow house on the other side.
Sure.
And the biggest issue is those dogs, they just scare me to death.
Yeah. Oh, you live in the south, then?
Yeah, yeah. Down on First Street there, that little yellow brown house. And they do, they scare me and they are, the Brenda one is the violent one.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's like, we have a little Jack Russell, my son loves me, and he takes her out about four-thirty, five o'clock morning. And I kind of think of her rumor that Adam lets the dogs run of the morning. And they come after him and he was able to just raise his voice and scream at them and it deterred them because they were coming at him to attack the little dog, because they attack cats down there and stuff, so, yeah.
If you know that it's running, they're running, call sheriff's department immediately, if you would, because I know that Brady's in touch with the deputies at Park County.
Okay.
And, uh, they'll note that and send an officer up hopefully right away if they have one.
Okay. That's basically what I was wanting to know about what we should do, because about three months ago I was bitten by a dog. It was a Doberman. And now I'm just trying to get myself back at ease with those big pit bulls are, woo, yeah, I mean, the heads are like this, but.
And you, you walk a lot?
Yeah, I, yeah, but in town maybe more.
Yeah, so you used to, yeah, and you shouldn't be afraid to not be able to, if you want to walk around, yes.
To use the beautiful sidewalks, because it was like, yeah, and now it's just like.
Yeah, if you don't want to, yeah.
No, I don't want to take that.
Right, I understand that.
We've had a lot of conversations about that down there and we're going to continue to work on it.
Right, right.
Nothing happens very quickly when it comes to the.
No.
To violations.
And Adam, he is, you know, you, you try to talk to him, he maybe, and he walks away and, you know, he's just, yeah.
Okay, we'll definitely call sheriff's department. If, if there is a dog, I don't even care if they're, the dog should not be running in town, anyway.
Yeah, it's like that little black one, Lucy, she's not praying, but she's just annoying, you know?
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming.
I mean, I did want to say that when you guys had that meeting over there at the Orige Building about the sewers, I walked over, but, you know, let me know when to slide it out, you know, because I'm ready for it, too. But it's like people, I, I understand we, we have to move forward, yes, everything costs, adjust.
Yes.
Make your adjustments, make your budget, don't complain, just go with the flow, you know what I mean? It's only to improve your life, come on.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I would like you guys to know that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, very appreciative.
Job, but I, I did get up and leave early because I was tired of hearing all the, the nays, you know?
Yeah.
But, yeah.
The biggest problem was that so many on truth were spread, you know?
Yes.
And of course, it was on Facebook, you know it had to be true, you know, and I'm dead serious. Reading on Facebook and internet, you know it's true, but, uh, and I, I got a brother's one of the hardest headwinds about it, you know, it's, uh, they just don't see it, I don't understand, but, uh, hopefully we'll get this done this time.
I'm going to, because it's kind of hard to plan and to make any suggestions of moving forward with doing anything else, because it's like you want to make sure that we can get that put in. And then we'll worry about the additions of maybe getting some side, more sidewalks done, this and that, because it's like you, you don't want to put money in and then find out you got to tear it out because it's in the way.
There was something about, you asked, I had something, I really have something, yeah. You told me you talked to Roy, Roy's been, and they approved what we want to do. That's why I asked Nick about that, I totally forgot. Isn't there like a six-month waiting period now or something? Well, there's a, a remonstrance period once they submit the application for a district.
Right.
And I don't know when that paperwork is going in or has gone in, uh, but then we just have to wait and that gives the public a time to.
Time to react, well, yes.
And then at the end of that six months, then a decision is made.
Six months?
Yeah.
I didn't know if that had been done yet or not, or.
Well, there's some resolutions that have not hit Park County's desk, Cindy Todd's desk. Uh, one of them for a very good reason and the other one, I don't know why. Now, I think they'll may end up just proceeding without those, but the towns have done theirs, all three communities.
Yeah, that's positive, all the towns have done it, haven't got theirs done, because that means that everybody's on board, basically, that need to be on board for us to be able to develop this.
Usually on our team's meetings, uh, that we have every two weeks online, the discussion centers around the federal funding, because you just never know what's coming down the pipe from Washington, and that's a big part of this project for grant money. Kind of waiting and hurry up and then wait and, and really we're six months right now waiting.
Being to possibility of new party and stuff, depend on what goes on with the election, that could become into play differently, too.
And, and I don't know if you allocate X number of dollars to a project, if the next leadership can say, no, we're not going to do that now, we're going to take it away.
See, I think they can, because some of that's been talked about, all this soul project stuff, that if you get the wrong person in there, they're coming, nix it all, and then you're stuck with all this and it's your expense.
So I, we can, we can only move on and hopefully that we've got our, uh, I's dotted and T's crossed and see what happens.
It's the bad thing on the waiting.
Yeah. Anybody else?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. We're adjourned.